Again, thanks for joining us. All right. Okay, is everybody all set? Are we good? Okay, we're good, Nate. Thank you. Okay, thanks. All right, so we'll begin the regular Select Board meeting for Tuesday, August 26. We are being recorded. We, first on our agenda, is a couple of follow-up questions for the two remaining candidates for TAs. So we have Nick, is it okay if I call you Nick? Nick Connors?
Yeah, that's what I prefer, actually.
Okay, great. It says your formal name here, so, since you're here a second time, we can get informal.
There you go.
So we just have a couple of follow-up questions.
Sure.
I think Danielle, if you want to, you want to start?
Sure.
If you don't mind?
I don't mind.
Okay.
Hi, Nick.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Good, thank you. So I want to, we're trying to understand a little bit more about your career moves.
Sure.
Could you share the main factor behind your decision to leave Milton? With specific examples about why you might be looking to leave a recently acquired position?
Sure. So, in short, I saw this as a tremendous opportunity, and as we discussed a little bit, and I don't want to rehash all of it, but when Doug, you had limited my answer to, you know, not talking about professional development, not talking about the sort of geographic benefit to it. This is a really unique opportunity, I see. Number one, because it is a natural career progression for me, and that was my hope and goal in going into Milton, and it's something that I actually discussed with the TA, Nick Milano. This certainly is a little bit ahead of schedule, I would think. But I took the time to fill out the application. I was hopeful that I would hear back from Rick, that I would get a chance to speak to the Selection Committee and obviously be before you. So it was my ultimate goal, to get before you all and to have this experience. And I want to be in this role. I want to be a town administrator. That's what I've sort of focused on career-wise towards the end of my time in the Baker administration, and then obviously here in Milton, when I've been in Milton. And over the time I've been there, I've worked very hard on sort of building the skills, certifications, and experience that would be useful when I make that next step. So that's, that's why I'm here, and that's why I applied, and that's why I think this is a good next step, but it's not something where I would be firing out a resume every time there's an opening anywhere, you know, north of the Turnpike or something like that. It's a real specific opportunity with challenges and opportunities here in town that I think are almost, you know, generational, and to have the chance to be involved in that and to work with you all and the residents is an exciting thing to think about.
And just to probe a little bit deeper, so, to the extent that you're comfortable letting us know this, how did that conversation go with Nick?
So, in reality, the first day that I started, he said, "I know you're not here forever." The conversation when I told him that I was going from the Selection Committee to coming before you all with the other two finalists was, for me, much more uncomfortable. He was excited for me when I told him. I certainly dreaded walking across the hall, walking past the colleagues that I have and the town administrator/Select Board Office. And he was very welcoming, very exciting, got a text when I was outside, "Good luck, let me know how it turns out," and he's going into our meeting down there right now. So it was, it was a good discussion, and certainly one that I sort of anticipated being more difficult than it was.
Of course. And just as a follow-up question, what makes you feel our town is the right long-term fit for you? And why should we feel confident in your commitment to staying and growing within our community?
Sure. So as I said when I was here a couple of weeks ago, my sort of affinity for Swampscott goes back to when I was in high school, it's 30-plus years ago. I was sort of impressed with the community, comparing it to where I grew up in Stoneham, and it's something that, since then, we have come, as I mentioned, and I don't mean to rehash these things, but, you know, to Red Rocks Mission on the Bay, it's a, it's a place that we have come because it's special to me, special to us, we enjoy it, it's beautiful. All of that being said, as I mentioned earlier in this line of questioning, there are generational opportunities that I think are really exciting. I think my experience and expertise on the public engagement and communication side particularly are something that is critically important and align really well with what is needed as you look at decisions that you're making on things like the Hawthorne property, ideas about what redevelopment on the economic side will look like in different portions of town. I think the work that I've done in public engagement, communications, and not just sort of firing information out, but really finding ways to tease out input and feedback, specifically at DCR and DOE-R, is something that is really useful and would align well with what I think, although you all may disagree, what I think the town could benefit from going forward as you do take on those generational opportunities.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Do you have a follow-up?
Can I follow up?
Please? You could tell in your eyes, you wanted to.
That's my whole body language, right? Go deeper with that, please. What experiences at DOE-R or DCR are most similar to what you see as the generational opportunities here and once you kind of lay out?
So, the part that I think, where I align there is the public engagement. And so at DCR, we were constantly engaged with the communities that hosted our properties, whether it's an infrastructure project, like redoing the Arbor Way in JP, or looking at the development of a new facility, or the rehab of an older one. Those are things that require input from the community. It's not just that we had $100 million to spend on capital, we needed to make sure that we were aligning the work that we were doing with our goals and priorities, but also with those of the communities that hosted our properties. And so that meant, you know, finding opportunities to talk to elected officials, volunteers, appointed officials, state, local, and certainly residents in all of the communities, finding new ways to engage them. Find, and so obviously COVID was one example where everyone pivoted to remote meetings. We saw that as an opportunity coming out of COVID to also go beyond that and look at ways like running, there was a playground in South Boston as an example, that the folks that we were partnering with wanted to make sure that we did not just put the same old playground and the same sort of inner-city setting. And we went on Instagram with the different ideas and things that kids had drawn at the community meetings and the visioning sessions to say, like, which ones are the directions that you want us to go in? It's looking for ways to engage people that are different, new, and using channels, both technology and in-person, that I think I can bring to the table, and I have experience with both the things that worked really well and the things that didn't work, and we redirected and learned from it, and, you know, continue to grow and continuously improve in that effort. More broadly, if you look at things that are more complex that happen here in town or in other communities, there's tools that are available now that folks probably haven't used before necessarily, like Google has a project where you can upload a massive dense PDF, and it will come up with a podcast that really sounds like a radio discussion between two, two folks that dives into pretty great detail for a community where a lot of folks are commuting out. This might be a different way that we are telling the story of everything from, you know, a project and the decisions that are being made in the Hawthorne property, to the financial policies and what the summit may want to do to collaborate on improvements or changes. It can take the 107 pages, and I actually did this to listen to it myself, just so I wasn't throwing this idea out here without seeing it, but it took 107 pages of financial policies and turned it into what was basically a 30-minute podcast. And it's in natural language, and it's easily understood, and it sort of teases out things that you can then go and learn more about if you'd like. But that's part of my idea in terms of finding new ways to engage folks. It's never going to just be a fire hose, you need to find ways to get feedback from them, and that sometimes means sharing information in new ways as well. So it wasn't so much that I think I have a magic bullet on what the best use of Hawthorne is, it's more that role in the process, I think, is something that I have particular skills that would be useful. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's good. Thanks.
Do you want to go next?
Sure. So I want to pivot a little bit to your management style, both in terms of prioritization of the innumerable things that are going to be on your plate all at the same time. And you can decide whether you want to answer these as two separate things or kind of as one amalgam. How do you create a great place to work for staff?
So the first part, I will answer quickly because I think the second part is probably more important. Prioritizing really comes from you all for me or anyone in this role. We look to you all for the priorities, and then we're working with staff to execute on the goals and objectives and priorities of the board. And again, I'm sorry for repeating things, but it's something that I think is really important to highlight. Even on things like appointments, it is a recommendation to you all, and you all are deciding. It's not a strong TA where it's just appoint and do whatever you'd like and report out to you all, it's making sure that we are working in a way that delivers to you all the best candidates for a position or anything like that. So, sure.
Were you going to go on to the second part?
Feel free to interrupt.
I had a feeling you were going to get that easy part, but I want to go another level down there. So that's, that's the, of course, we should give you priorities, but still, we're going to give you five or 10 or whatever it is. There's going to be 100 different possibilities, right? Beyond that five or 10. There's going to be, you know, community input, there's going to be staff, there's going to be all sorts of pieces flying at you. How do you kind of, what's your process for continuing to be in sync with the board, be in sync with your department heads? How do you think about that level of prioritization?
So in sync with the board, again, I'll start with you all, is ideally regular conversations, both here, when I'm preparing the information that you all need to make informed decisions, as well as plans to execute, so that when you are making a policy decision, you sort of know where we're headed. That's number one, but also regular informal conversations, whether it's text message, phone call, email, I'm happy to meet elected officials where they're at and whatever works best. It can be over coffee, it can be in the office, it can be walking along, you know, the road somewhere. It's whatever works best for each of you, but I think that regular communication is vitally important, particularly with the Chair and Vice Chair, but with all of you individually as well, so that I can understand what everyone needs and wants. More broadly, when you're talking about staff, is that the, I think, not to, you know, skip to the second part, but the number one part is the human resource side for me, because department heads are responsible for their departments. There's the staff that is obviously directly under the Select Board. However, I think it's really important that the number one priority are the things that are related to human resources and the needs and questions and concerns of staff. It's not to the extent that I would completely throw everything else to the side, but that if that comes in, that's going to get a quick look to see if it's something that is a hair on fire moment that needs to be addressed. So that would be just the number one goal. To be honest, I can't tell you day-to-day what would be most important, it really will be driven by deadlines and what else is going on. And so if there's something that's due for a grant, that's going to go to the top because it's, you know, time-sensitive and needs to be addressed. If it's gathering information for you all, the board meeting's coming up on a Tuesday, that's going to be a priority, and that would be almost the end of every week before, making sure that the packet is prepared and things are posted in a timely manner, so that you all have what you need in advance, again, to make informed decisions on these policy concerns, and to go from there. The great place question, to me, it's really about some of the same things. Again, I apologize for repeating myself, it's having those conversations when I start, not just with department heads, but with just about everyone at some point in the very near term, so that I can understand not only the leaders that are appointed in department head roles, but informal leaders and within the staff. Understanding what motivates individuals is incredibly important to me, not because we can necessarily bend our priorities to them, but there are certainly ways to be mindful of that when we're assigning, assigning work or assigning tasks and finding ways to engage someone in their work in ways that they may not have in the past. And it's, to me, listening. I'm not here to come out and just dictate everything all the time. It's not about tasks, it's about understanding what is motivating individuals, getting to know them, and trying to align their interests and expertise with the goals, priorities, and objectives of the board. That is not perfect, it is not a panacea, but it is certainly my goal. And I think that by having relationships with individuals, understanding what motivates them, knowing what's going on in their life, they're engaged in a way that they may not have been in the past year with the folks in my office, if I were to come and join. And so it's about having those relationships and, over time, understanding how you can, you know, meet their, their interests and objectives and align them with what the board wants to get done.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have a quick question. When you're talking about management style and dealing with department heads, how would you go about dealing with a department that possibly has a morale issue, poor morale?
I think the first step is to do what I described, which is not only talk to the department head and hear, like, "Oh, things aren't going well," or "I've been here for a while," but actually hearing from the individuals that are within the department. It is not something that will immediately fix anything, but understanding what those concerns are that are driving low morale or driving a lack of interest in the shared goals and priorities can only come from conversation, it's only, it's from listening and learning from the staff, it's not something that I think I could dictate, you know, "Things should be better here, and I'm new here, so you should have a great time now." It's really understanding what's bringing everyone to the table with those issues and concerns and seeing what can be done differently.
Thank you.
Okay. So, obviously, municipalities, leadership roles such as TA, town manager, or elective mayor, they, they're different.
Yeah.
They have a significant difference in authority, responsibility, and relationship to community and elected officials. How would you briefly describe the key differences in your summation? And based on your understanding, how do you see the role of TA in Swampscott? And how would you approach it, working within the framework to best serve the board and the community?
So briefly, like, a mayor is making policy and operational administrative decisions, both. TA and TM, it's the strength of the role that is differentiated by town, and even among TAs, there are strong and weak TAs. So there's sort of a spectrum there as well, and it comes, in many cases, down to the appointment authorities and what exists and what doesn't, appointment and removal of different positions. My understanding, reading the Charter, is sort of the weaker TA side, where I am preparing, along with staff, the information needed to make informed decisions on policy by you all and other elected and appointed boards. We are not making policy decisions. I think the phrasing I used when I was here before was, through sort of the nighttime government, the daytime government, we're executing, you all are deciding and pointing us in the direction that the community wants to be going. And when it comes to things like appointment, it's working, you know, presenting to you candidates for roles, as an example, that make sense, that we have gone through a process that we can articulate to you in sort of, this is how we pick the candidates, this is where we advertise, these are the types of questions we asked, this is how they were ranked, if that's a level of information that you all would like in the public meeting. And we're just giving you all the information necessary for you to make an informed decision, along with a plan that articulates the execution, so that it's not just that you all are making this decision in a vacuum, but you have an idea of what, what will happen next on the town side. And so that's something that requires effort on the employee side and the staff side to put that together in advance, but I think it's really useful to give you the context needed, so that, again, it's not a vacuum where it's like, here, here's all the data, good luck. It's data plus impact and what you can expect to see are the ways that I would like to move forward in a role like this. Does that address your question? Did I miss a piece?
No, I think that, I think the only other thing is, how would you approach working within the framework to serve our residents? I think you answered that without being specific.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, it's, you know, again, listening and learning is a big part of it, but it's coming to elected and appointed boards with all the information that you all feel is necessary to make an informed decision and with a plan to execute. So I think that, that does kind of capture my view of it anyway. I'm sorry if it doesn't directly address the question.
No, it does.
So you've expressed reviewing the Swampscott financials, right? I just wanted to know, how do you foresee balancing next year's budget without tapping into our unused levy?
To be honest, I don't think I could answer that question right now without, number one, the biggest driver would, or the two drivers would be healthcare costs and special ed and outer district transportation and tuition. So to answer that question, I honestly think would be almost, it would, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't make sense to, to tell you right now what the best answer to that is without knowing those two critical factors, that even as you look at the 10-year projection, those are things that are very difficult to forecast. They've obviously, healthcare as an example, has jumped significantly within the GIC, and even last year exceeded the initial guidance that was given in late 2024, when we got to 25 and it was actually finalized, it had gone up outside of the range. So I, I wouldn't want to say that I have the answer for that without spending more time, both with department heads and with you all as elected officials, to understand the exact goals and priorities that you all would want to have at the top of the list as you figure out, you know, where can changes be made, what variable can we isolate to understand what the impacts are on the priorities that you all have set. But, you know, with something like GIC, the opportunities that exist in Milton are self-insured. Cooking Company is an outside vendor that will sit down with any town, whether it's in GIC or out, and pencil out sort of what the impact would be of trying to switch, to say, "We do want to be self-insured," or, in our case, we were trying to make sure we didn't want to consider going back and going into GIC. So there's opportunities to isolate those variables and to see what, what is out there, but I, I think it would be, it wouldn't be in the best interest of anyone for me to guess right now how it could be balanced next year without specifically those two, and having a really good idea of what that impact will look like.
Thank you.
Answer your question? A little bit?
A little bit.
Yeah.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. So we're talking about potentially tapping unused levy capacity. Nick, what are your feelings on an under-ride?
On an under-ride?
Yeah.
I think if the community would like to move forward with it, then it's something that the town employees and staff would need to operate under. I think that the work that you all have done to create excess levy capacity that's unused is something that, if an under-ride was not pursued, provides opportunities and flexibility for the community, should financial conditions change, or should the, the sort of macro-environment change. But as with an override, I think what our goal is on the staff side is to be ready to operate under whatever scenario is put forward by elected officials, and in a case like that, by the community. I don't think it's the role of my position, or anyone in my position, to be deciding or giving a personal opinion on what would, what would be best in that regard, it's provide the information to make informed decisions. In both Milton and in Linfield, to a lesser extent. In Milton, I built the website that was a prop two-and-a-half-override site, so that people could see the actual impacts on their tax bills, not just the, you know, DOR here within this range, this is what your taxes would go up, but it was type in your address and go and see what your impact will be. And we're also very clear, beginning in, in Milton, we started talking about it in July, like, immediately when the new fiscal year began, we said, "We see a deficit in the projections, we're unsure of the number. Everyone needs to be aware that this is something that could happen, and we need to make difficult decisions about funding." And then we continued to communicate that throughout the year, as the number, because of healthcare costs and out-of-district special education, it accelerated far beyond what we had, it ended up being, I think, 9.5 or 9.1, and we thought it was going to be 4.9 in the beginning. So talking about it and communicating that and being able to answer questions, both of elected officials and community members, is something, again, that I think is vitally important. It was a different model than was pursued in Linfield, where it was sort of discussed much later in the process that we had, had an issue with the budget. And so the model that I would follow is certainly the one we did in Milton, which is, come before you all as soon as we see that in the projection, and if you look out in the 10-year projection, if we see it two years out, we could just say, like, this is something that's out there. We can sit down and isolate individual variables there to say, "If this goes up X, the deficit goes away, if this goes down, the deficit is back," you know? So it's that ongoing discussion, but it's something where, from my standpoint, you could anticipate me being in on a regular basis. And the TA reporter, it's some other part of the agenda to, to really be as transparent as possible, like, these are issues that we see potentially out there on the horizon, so that you can see that those impacts are there, and we can talk about it openly, if there's any other decisions or discussions around funding or an under-ride or anything else. But people will be fully informed in those decision-making processes.
Thanks, Dan.
You've definitely demonstrated financial fluency in your answer here, but I think it would be helpful to kind of isolate out your level of responsibility in your past three positions for the finances of those organizations, so that we can understand your general financial fluency versus your direct accountability
Sure.
for either being the financial leader, or supervising the financial leaders in the organization, or if that was somewhat more tangential and you were part of the general financial strategic team, but not the actual operational team.
So in Milton, it's the strategic team. We have a finance department, we have an accountant, we have a treasurer collector, along with the TA, we're all together talking about forecasts and decisions that need to be made, or opportunities that may exist. At DOE-R and DCR, I was managing that process. We had, again, there were staff in finance, folks that were both managerial and collectively bargained that have been there for years, that worked very closely with us, again, trying to align our priorities with the funds that were available and opportunities that may exist. You know, when it comes to the financial forecasting, both in Milton or in Linfield, when we're talking about municipals specifically, there's tools available for anyone on DOE-R, on DOR's website, rather, excuse me, to do forecasting and that type of thing. What we've done in Milton, and, you know, in part, this is the relationship I've had with Andrew Flanagan, who's the mentor relationship that I have, is look at what Andover is doing as an example, and he walked through how he has, over time, and he's in his 10th budget there, how he has, over time, refined that process to be able to isolate the things that are most impactful or most important to the elected officials for him, that he works for in town, and that would be something I would anticipate doing here as well. It's working closely with the department heads who are closest to it, who have their priorities and goals that we've, you know, would collaborate on annually, and working closely to put together that budget. But, you know, it was strategic in the current role, and then managing the process over the previous two.
Thank you.
Sure.
Everybody good?
Good.
Great. Well, that exhausted our list.
Great.
Have anything for us you need?
I think the, the only other thing that I would love, the chance, is that one of the questions that you asked and then came up in the deliberation was around the CBA work, and I know you all discussed it a little bit last week, and I, I just wanted to add a little more context to that. I think there was one or two questions, and then the third was directly, do you, have you, have you run the collective bargaining process? And I answered no to that. What I think is really important is sort of the philosophy around it, that if I were, that you understand sort of where I would be coming from, and it, it aligns with what I've said a lot in different answers throughout my time with you, which is communicating information in context, and in this case, it would be with the collectively bargained partners. The, the winning or losing, or the success or failure of the negotiation does not come at the table when you're sitting there, it's the relationship, it's the building trust in advance of that, and making sure that when we all sit down at that table, the environment and the constraints that we're all working under are very clear to everyone, so that, you know, the sustainability of the financial model for the town is clear to the folks that we're sitting down with. For us, there's flexibility that's maintained, so that changes can be made if and when financial conditions change. And then what I think is most important is, an important part of this is the idea that any negotiation is focused on the retention of the employees that are here, have invested themselves, and we've invested in it over time. We want to make sure that they are valued, feel valued, and they feel fairly compensated, understanding all of that other information. So I just wanted to share that, you know, if I were in that position, it's not just a hard no, which is sort of how I ended it, but there has been more thought put into that, and the experience that I've had is sort of the number two in Milton, looking at comps, working through strategy, being in the room, and then discussing afterwards what our next steps are, are all things that I would bring to the table here, although the answer to the direct question may not have been as, you know, contextual when I was here last time, so I wanted to make sure I shared that.
Thanks.
Do you have a follow-up? I feel like you do.
No.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is it. Appreciate you coming back.
Sure. Thank you for having me, Dana.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I think...
We're not live, right? I can see them.
We are live.
We are live.
Yeah. We are live, yeah. Hello. Come on in.
How you doing?
Great, how are you? Nice to see you. Nice to see you.
Were you able to hear our conversation?
I heard I was tape recording it, yeah.
Is that all right?
That's your strategy.
That was a funny answer, but it wasn't a direct answer.
No, I made sure of it.
It's, you gotta go back some tabs to find. Alrighty. Thank you for joining us again.
Thanks for having me.
We are going to just ask a couple of follow-up questions, 30 minutes. And then if there's time, welcome to give us feedback or have questions for us or clarify anything you said last time. It's totally fine. And we'll start with Danielle.
Hi, Jason. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, thanks. So we'd like to understand a little bit more about your career moves. Could you share the main factor behind your decision to leave Marblehead? With specific examples, if possible, is the first part of it.
Okay. Just Marblehead, you won my, yeah. I was cooked. I was, truly. I had kind of gone through, it felt like at least, one thing after another after another. And it was kind of after COVID. It was odd timing because I had just signed a new five-year contract with the town. But soon after that, I realized I needed, I needed a break from municipal government. In the back of my mind, I always knew I, or I always felt like I'd come back to it at some point. But at that moment, it was time for me to take a break for my physical health, for my mental health, for my family. And so that was the main driver for leaving Marblehead. It was time. I felt it physically and mentally.
Okay. So just to go a little bit deeper into that piece, what makes you feel like Swamp Scott is going to be any different than what you might have experienced in Marblehead?
Jeez, I don't, I don't know if it will be. I don't know if it will be. I mean, I can only base it on what I've, I mean, I talked about last time, the work I had done to research the position in the community and the folks I've talked to, the meetings I've watched. I think I'm in a much different place than I was then, too. I am so grateful for where I am now because it allowed me to kind of rediscover my joy in the work and my passion for the work. So I'm in a different place than I was at the end when I was kind of ready to move on. But, you know, you never, you never, just like you never know if I'm the right fit or the right candidate out of the last two remaining. You know, you never know until you're in the position. I wouldn't have come this far, I wouldn't have applied unless I thought it was the right fit. It was a good fit. It was a place where I could make meaningful impact and that I could bring, I thought that my skills, experience, background would serve the community well. I wouldn't have applied if that weren't the case, so.
And why should we feel confident in your commitment to being able to stay and grow within our community when, you know, you were just renewed in Dunstable, right?
Yep.
A couple of months ago. So I'm trying to figure out how we can feel that you're going to be here for the long haul, right? That we can, you know, be comfortable in knowing that, you know, five, 10 years, you know, we're not going to have to do, or three years, we're not going to have to do this process again.
Yeah.
So that's something you could speak to.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. Is that's really what I want? I mean, I want, I don't, I've kind of had a lot of, you see from my resume, I've had a lot of experience, I have a varied background. And it's up to this point, it's been, wow, this is a great opportunity. This kind of presented itself to me. But, you know, Rick was just saying, well, you're luck greater than you used to be. Yeah, I am. And so I wouldn't mind having a position where I, you know, is more stable, more long-term than I have had in the past, mostly because of that. So.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah.
I had a follow-up last time.
Oh, you can't remember it?
No, I can't remember it.
That's okay. Do you want to go on to the second question? Maybe your follow-up will come to you.
Alex Ticken.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
That's you.
Danielle, did you, okay, you covered it all. Okay, good. So I want to ask about management style. I know we've talked about that a little bit last time, but in two different dimensions. One in terms of prioritization and how you do that. And then the other piece is about kind of creating a great place to work for staff. You mentioned last time that you've kind of taken, you learn some things in HR classes, whatever. So just like to really, first piece is probably a little bit easier, but the second piece, I'd like you to really kind of expound upon that opportunity. Because I think there's no doubt that we have some opportunities here, given the transitions and everything, to really kind of up our game in that regard.
Okay. I'm a big, I'm a big list guy. I have lists and I prioritize my list constantly. But I think I mentioned it the last round, too. I have goals and objectives that I have on my desk that I refer to quite frequently that are a result of work between town administrator and the select board. And we've kind of, there's, we've built some consensus around those. And so I have that. I have my list. And I'm prioritizing my list as much as I can based on that. That's how I do it. And so I do my best. It's not perfect, but I do my best. Because it's easy to get, it's easy to get distracted in this work. But I do my best to align what I'm doing with what we're trying to achieve. And that's how I prioritize the work, essentially. It's not all that intricate or complicated. It's pretty simple, but it works for me.
If you're about to go on to the second part, let me push on the first part a little bit first.
Yes, please.
It's great. We have five or 10 joint goals. Great. Maybe that's 25, 50% of your time. So all the department heads, there's community, there's committees, there's other things that are going to come up all the time. Talk more about how you manage that, how do you kind of work that with the select board? How do you work that with department heads? Because like you say, it's great that you have a list, but you're going to be printing that thing out every single day. It's going to keep shifting around. So how does that work?
Similar to what I just said, it's not much different than that. I mean, you're constantly feeling pressure from people on, I need this done yesterday. No, I need this done yesterday. And it's not possible. You know, and not to mention, like, the goals and objectives that we set annually, there's a lot of new work listed on those things. And once you do it, you oftentimes, it go, now you're doing it every single year. So not only are you working on future-year goals, but you're, you've got to make sure that the last three-year's goals continually get met. So you got to be, you really do got to be tight with the organization. And if you stray too much from that, you're not going to achieve what you really ultimately want to. So be honest, you be transparent with people, you let people know, look, I understand it's a priority, it's on the list and we're going to get to it. I just can't tell you when. Or give them, give them an estimate of when you think you can. I always tell people, if you don't hear from me in a reason, whatever you would consider a reasonable timeframe, contact me, call me, email me. Do not be afraid to do that because I can promise you it hasn't left the list, but it's always welcome to get a reminder, you know? So feel free all the time, stop in, give me a call, shoot me an email. But yeah, I mean, it's not an easy, it's not an easy thing. It's, there's always a lot of balls in the air. There's always a lot of competing, sometimes competing interests, sometimes competing priorities between departments, between board, between committees. You lean on the resources you have, you work collaboratively with everybody and you push forward the most important items on the list based on those interactions.
Part two.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Like I said at the last meeting, this has become a real priority of mine. And it maybe wasn't so much a priority earlier in my career. I've realized it is in some ways selfish, but in other ways, I've realized the importance of it. So I'm going to repeat some, you probably have some of this because I think I talked about it a little bit. But you value people, you support people, you earn people's trust any way you can. And then you make sure, one thing that's, I think, critically important is you make sure that you're tying everybody's work back to what we're trying to accomplish. Because everybody has a role and everybody has an important role in making sure that you're accomplishing the goals and objectives that you've set forth for the year. And so, you know, when someone does a good job, make sure you make a big deal of it. Make sure they know that you noticed that they did a good job. I think that's really important. I think constant feedback, you know, I do that. I probably could do that a little better, actually. But, you know, not only during the annual review, but constant feedback on their work, input when it makes sense. I have an open-door policy, so, and when I say that, most of the time, literally, open door. My door is open into the hallway, so people can come in whenever they want, staff and the public. I think that's important. Transparent communication is important. Celebrating the wins, celebrating people's, you know, small things to big things. Like I mentioned, we have a peer-to-peer recognition program where I am now, which has been great, you know, at each staff meeting. Most staff meetings, I have, like, I start the meetings off with a TED Talk. I'm a big Celtics fan, so, you know, we watch a lot of Celtics plays and Larry Bird. And so we do those things to kind of, kind of talk about leadership, people's roles, the importance of people's roles. Jeez, I could go on forever. But those type of things have become the part of the work culture where I am now, and I love it. It's so important to me. And I think people, it's part of, kind of, for me, my journey. It was part of, like, recognizing, I just need to be authentic, who I am. And if it's talking about Larry Bird and, you know, when he stole the ball against the Pistons and how amazing that was, that's who I am. I love it. And I can, if you want me to do it right now, I can link back every role and why and just each, each thing that happened and what it demonstrated about the people, about the team and how it relates to our team. It's just become part of what we do and people have really embraced it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question. As far as your different departments, how would you manage a department if you learned that, within that department, they had a morale issue, poor morale?
So I'd, I'd work with the department head. So try to understand from the department head what's going on. If I'm receiving feedback like that, share the feedback. And try to coach them up by hopefully observation, but also set out a plan on things that we could do to improve things. And if that meant some, you know, involve HR too, I don't want to forget that. And if that meant me getting involved in that, that would be, I would be, I'd be, certainly be comfortable with that. But I also would, you know, I respect the role of the department heads and you have the department heads because you trust that they're able and capable of doing the job. So I'd want to work through the department head on that. But again, to the extent I had a role in that and the department head was comfortable with the role, then I would, I would, I mean, like I said, it is, it has become something that I'm pretty passionate about because I think it's, you just see how important it is to the productivity of the organization as a whole. And so it's certainly something I'd focus on.
Thank you. Just to piggyback off that, what you just said.
Yep.
What happens if the problem is with the department head?
Well, that would come, you'd find that out soon, I think, you know? So as you were working with the department head and coaching the department head up, I think, you know, that would, that would come to light at some point and I, probably in short order. So, and like I said, you have to be authentic to yourself. So my way of improving, you know, workplace morale might be different than someone else's way. So you wouldn't want to force-feed somebody, hey, you have to do X, Y, and Z. It would have to be something that they're comfortable in their skin and they're comfortable in doing. But if it turned out that, you know what, maybe the department head, for whatever reason, isn't being effective, then that's when, as a leader, you kind of, you step in and not only help with the situation, but also coach the department as you go.
Thank you.
Okay. In municipalities, leadership roles such as TA or town manager and elected mayor are significantly different in terms of authority and responsibility. I think we talked a little bit about that last time.
Yeah.
So just how would you, in your own words, describe sort of the key differences between those positions? And then, based on your understanding, how do you see the role of TA in Swamp Scott? And how would you approach working within the framework to best serve the board and the residents?
That's a good question. And it's something that I kind of learned on the fly because I came from a city and then I went to a town without, and I went from, you know, chief of staff to that long title I had and then to, ultimately to Marblehead. And without any, like, training wheels, so to speak. I didn't have an assistant position where I kind of went in and learned how towns work. And there were differences that I wish I had known going in that I learned as I went because it is so different. City government, in my opinion, is more nimble. You can get things done quicker. And sometimes that's good and sometimes it's not. I find with town government, it's longer process. It takes more process and buy-in. And oftentimes, it ends up in a better place because of that process and those who are involved. As town administrator, like I think I said, you know, I am, I typically provide a recommendation to the board if I think it warrants a recommendation or if I'm asked. But I also ultimately understand that the decision, a lot of the times, is not mine, that it's the board's. And I have a real respect for that and understanding of that. And my feelings don't get hurt when you disagree with me or when my board disagrees with me. It happens and that's okay. So I see the role as a town administrator as kind of trying to execute on a day-to-day basis what you're looking to accomplish and trying to do that within the parameters that you've set. And I also feel like my role is to support the board and, you know, in all ways I can. Make sure that you're in the loop and understand what the heck is going on, especially if it's something of significance. Make sure that you're aware it's communicated with you and if it needs your input, that you have an opportunity to provide input. And that's how, that's how I view the role. But I view it as a, there's a real need for a strong But I view it as a, there's a real need for a strong, like it's a collaboration here, it's a partnership, if you're doing well, I'm doing well, and vice versa. And, and that's part of the, that's part of the role that I enjoy. I, public service is what it, is what it actually, it says, it's, you're working with the public, you're working with boards and committees to get things done. And if I, if that wasn't part of the role, I probably wouldn't want to be part of it because that's really part of it that I, that I enjoy, so.
Last question?
Last question. So you've expressed reviewing our financials, and I just want to know, going forward, how would you foresee balancing and dealing with our financials for next year, with next year's budget, without having to tap into our unused levy?
Have you made that decision already, that you're, that you're not going to tap into it?
We haven't made that decision.
Okay, all right. But assuming, let's, let's play the, play that out, assuming that you want to avoid that, it's tough, it's tough decisions. I mean, that's what happens in these situations, you have to make, you're going to have to make decisions that some people may like and some people may not. At the end of the day, you know, in Dunstable, we don't have a finance director, so what, one of the things that I learned in Dunstable is how to put a budget together because I didn't, I never, I mean, I had a seat at the table and I was active in budget preparation and creation, but I didn't put it together. And when I started and I found that, found out that I was the one who put it together, I was, really? Okay, let's go. So it was a learning experience to start. But it's ultimately, when you're putting it together, it's not that, it's not that complicated, it's, it's money in, money out, and they have to, they have to balance. So, so you go through the process, you create a process that people buy into, you communicate the parameters. If you decide you don't want to tap into the levy, what that means to everybody's budget, you've communicated that, this is, this is the budget we need in, and then you weigh your options after. That's, that's kind of, that's, that's the only way to do it. That's, that's the only way I know how to do it.
Thank you.
A follow-up quickly, Jason. We're talking about not tapping our unused levy capacity, but, you know, what are your feelings potentially on an under-ride?
An under-ride?
Yeah.
Oof. And I, again, it's, these are community decisions, I always say this because we've gone through three override requests, and so I always say, here's my recommendation, but these are commu, this is a community decision ultimately. If you want to do an override, these are the things you can have. If you don't want to do an override, these are the things you can't have. If you want to do an under-ride, same thing. Look, the value of an under-ride, this is what you'll see. This is what you, this is what you're going to lose. But I see those as, look, if you want to have those conversations, absolutely. And I, like I said, I, I've made my recommendation over the last three years for balanced budget that required an override, and the community disagreed twice and agreed, and agreed once. And I, the same would go for an under-ride if that's what the community wanted. But you, but you know, like, the community prioritizes that over, over municipal services, then you have to do, that's, your job is to deal with that.
Thank you.
It must have been a real challenge having to work with an override and balance your budget when your, your school budget is also tied to another community. What was that like?
So, yeah, I mean, the first year that I was there, I think I talked about this a little bit, we, we, generally speaking, our timeline for our budget was well behind the charter requirements of the Town of Groton and the school district. And so, and so we were based, they kind of went through their process and said, okay, here's your assessment for schools, because it's just a ma, it's a 23% match of what Groton's paying. And so they had our, they set their budget, here's your bill, 23%, okay, we'll budget that, and then we got to figure the rest out. And so to me, that wasn't a great process for us. So how we figured it out was, we're going to create a budget working group that I talked about before, we're going to have everybody, finance committee, it's called Advisory Board in Dunstable, Select Board, me, and school district, superintendent in finance, school committee, and Groton, and we all came together. First year was a little, was a little bumpy, but we ultimately got to a point where we, we all agreed, look, this isn't like a one-year problem, this is at least a three-year problem, we see it. We're a minimum A community, which I don't know if Swam Scott is, but, but minimum A, Chapter 70 was like really, it still is a real problem where we are. And, and so we saw, we saw the projections, so we went, we requested three, an override for three years to fund municipal and schools, and it got, it got beat pretty good. It got, it was closer in Dunstable than in Groton, but it got beat in both communities. And so this last year, we went for one year and it passed, and Dunstable didn't pass in Groton. And so, so we have, we, and, and, I mean, if you, if you look on the website, if you look on Facebook and social media, we put a whole, we had a whole communications and outreach strategy just for that. And that was a major component, I think, of like people understanding where we were at with, you know, we did something called kitchen conversations, where we came to people's homes and had community discussions, I did coffees at the local cafe, we had social media constant campaign, we had forums, we had workshops, we, I mean, we really did all that we could to get the word out and to engage with people about the budget. But yeah, it's, it is, it's, it's, the way to make that work is developing close working relationships with the school district and the Town of Groton in order for everybody to understand, this is where our finances are, this is where the schools' finances are, and this is where Town of Groton's are. And how do we merge all of those together so that we're not putting one at such a disadvantage as the others? So yeah, maybe all of us are going to have to make some tweaks and some decisions, but it's not so much that we're decimating like, you know, certain services in one town or in schools, so. Yeah, that was a, that was a process for sure, to get it working the way we wanted it to.
Little follow-up. So the years when the override didn't pass, the school budget's set, does the school budget then get adjusted when it didn't override, or is all the, the pain flow back to the town side?
So the first year, the override failed by six votes, and so we ended up cutting on the municipal side and fully funding the schools, the first year. Second year, the discussion really was, and, and the override was truly for the schools, that was the request. The municipal side in both communities was able to balance. If you kind of proportioned out the revenue coming in and the expenses, town side in both communities were essentially balanced, but the school growth was far more than our revenue growth. So because that got failed, ultimately the schools actually absorbed the reductions, and they had to reduce 27, I think, positions. And so this year, there was a combination of minor school reductions and minor reductions in Groton. I don't want to call them minor, but, you know, the, the financial cost of them were both minor in comparison, so they both had to make some, they had to tighten their belt a little bit, and we were able to fund our budget as it was proposed because ours passed.
Did the, did the public fault municipal government in Dunstable for the teacher reductions that happened in that situation? Like you all somehow had decided the town somehow could fund what it needed, but the pain was going to flow to the schools? How did that?
They didn't, in, as far as I know, in neither, in either community because it was so clear what the need was and what the ask was, that when it failed, and it, we, it was kind of communicated like this through the process that, hey, it's going to mean either these reductions in the schools or these reductions on the town side. And honestly, the reductions on the town side were just not, they weren't possible because we're already so, we're already so lean that to do it would have been, I mean, just almost, it would have made it very difficult to just function, you know? So no, but there wasn't a lot of that. I mean, there was disappointment but with this, from the school, from the school community. And I think also maybe because we really put so much effort into making sure people knew what was in front of them and what they were voting on and what the impacts were potentially, there was a lot of work put into that, that I think people appreciated the work that was put in, kind of collaboratively, I, maybe that helped, but no, there wasn't a ton of that pushback.
Who did all that comms work, the communication work?
The comms work for the budget stuff was mostly me. The, but I had, there's an assistant to town administrator and select board, and she does, she's really good at it too. So she does a lot of it. She's excellent. We built that, when, when I first started, we didn't even have, we had no social media presence, so we built that, which is, again, that's another, I don't want to say small thing, but it's something that's had, you know, put some focus on it and it's had huge impact, so people really appreciate it.
Excellent. Okay, well, we're out of time, but if you wanted to offer us anything, I don't know if you have any, anything you wanted to circle back on from last time, or?
I don't, I just want to thank you for the opportunity and appreciate, I know everybody's been doing due diligence because I've heard from a lot of friends, so I really, I, so I know you're doing due diligence, I really appreciate that. And, and whoever you pick, I wish, I wish you and the community luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right.
I'm going to ask our esteemed group here to vote, community input.
We don't have public comments, so we are not. Thank you for the suggestion, Doug. But we are going to go along to our discussion on the finalists. So unless anybody needs two minutes? Okay.
I do have a question, oh, you're going to take a two-minute break? I do have a question before, I just want to know, just for full transparency, if anyone on this board has had any communication with either of these two candidates, whether it be email, telephone, or meeting?
Not for me.
Not for me?
I mean, I received a outreach from one of the candidates, but I did not respond.
Oh, not for me.
Not for me.
How about for you?
Same as you, but I had no, no communication.
Fantastic. Okay, so, everybody knows what our objective is here tonight? Who wants to get started? I started last time, so.
I'll just say that I, I thought they were both terrific, really. I, I think we have two great candidates, and for me, tonight it got harder instead of easier, actually. And it's, the last thing I want to do is have yet another meeting, but I actually frankly could use five minutes even, just to really read over this and digest this. I don't want to feel like I'm just talking because I need to talk, which is what I'm doing right now.
You are? Yeah, we could take a five-minute break this time.
For me, it would be helpful just to kind of process this a little bit.
Okay, let's take 10 minutes.
Five-minute Doug process break?
Why don't we take?
Hopefully it's helpful to everyone else.
Why don't we take 10 minutes?
Works, 7:15.
We'll take 10 minutes, we'll come back at 7:15, and obviously we won't be discussing amongst ourselves, this will be by ourselves, and we'll see you guys in 10 minutes.
Sounds good.
Timeout.
Okay.
I should have.
We're back. We've all gathered our thoughts, and now we have very interesting things to say.
Do you want to just go down the row? Or are we going back to, start with you, Mary Ellen?
You want, yeah, go ahead.
I didn't say this end.
Oh, you said down the row.
I will, I will, I will. So, for me, yes, tonight made it a little bit harder. Both candidates, once again, did a really good job. I think, you know, for Jason, Jason serving in Marblehead gives him more exposure out there. And when you're in that position during COVID, during a very, very serious deficit, having to do big jobs, it makes you also a little bit more vulnerable, and, and the target of people being able to make comments about your work or, or not your work. So, I did spend quite a bit of time talking to people, residents in Marblehead, and I got, I got a great review on, on him. I did speak to Senator Lovleys, Lovleys, where he worked. Great review. Reached out to three of the select board members, great review. A department head, of the safety department head, was a mediocre review. Another safety department head, two of them were very, very high. TA assistance was very good. So, for me, they're both great candidates, but I'm, I'm leaning more towards Jason because of Jason's experience. And I feel that it's what the town needs right now, is the experience. If they're both even, that would be, that would be the difference. And I don't, I don't think they're even. I think that he has more experience in all the aspects of what it's going to take. So, that would be, that would be my, that's where I'm leaning, towards Jason.
Doug?
We can go to Danielle and David.
Sure, Danielle.
I've always talked a little bit.
So, I think, to Mary Ellen's point, this is an incredibly tough decision, made even more difficult tonight. I, too, have done an awful lot of research. I've talked to a lot of people. But I caution that, when you talk to people that have acted as references, or people that have been former employers, it's very subjective, right? So you have to really, I personally tend to get more of my information from the candidate themselves. So I base a lot more how I judge people in what they actually, their answers, and, you know, compare them to one another. Both exceptional candidates. We're really lucky to be even having this discussion and having this choice. I personally find myself leaning towards Nick Connors. And I, I, you know, Marblehead was a big question for me, right? So it was a big lingering concern for me. I have heard some different opinions of what came out of that experience from Mr. Silva. And, you know, we probably will never know the actual truth of it, right? So we just have to get, gather as much information as we can and make an informed decision. And the way I do that, if all things are considered equal in one, I've heard some potentially negative things about, or things that are not as great, I would rather, I, I consider that a disadvantage. So I would, I would hedge towards the one that doesn't come in with any type of negative connotation, or potentially negative connotation. I also think that, I was pretty impressed by Mr. Connors' due diligence about the town of Swambscott, and really digging into what's going on here right now, what our priorities are, what our pressing issues are, and really taking the time to exhibit that he understands where we're at. So I was quite impressed by that. I, too, have spoken to a lot of people in Linfield, a lot of people in Marblehead. Mr. Connors lives in Linfield. He's on the finance committee there. I have spoken to a lot of people in Marblehead, where Mr. Silva has worked. So I have really done as much digging, so to speak, as possible, but I really do rely on my gut. And I really rely on listening to the responses of the candidates themselves. And I feel like Mr. Connors is eager to be a TA, and is coming into that with a fresh perspective in terms of not having maybe a jaded experience, or an experience that has colored his outlook about the position itself. And I find that refreshing. I, I do also think because he, he has a law degree, he has worked for the Department of Environmental at the state level, he has worked for DCR at the state level, which function very similar to a small municipality. So the experience piece, you know, while I feel like experience is important, it's not the only piece of the puzzle for me. And I think in light of the last TA that we had, we really do owe it to ourselves to focus on someone that can communicate, repair a relationship with residents, with staff members, all encompassing. And I feel like Mr. Connors displayed that to me. So that's where I'm leaning. I'm never one to say, you know, rule anybody out, but that is, that's my initial take. That's how I feel.
Back to you, Doug.
I'm happy to go, Doug.
Oh, great. David, go ahead.
Yeah.
I thought we were flip-flopping.
Do whatever, whatever you would like. No, so, yeah, tonight, tonight was, was definitely reflective of, you know, the difficult decision that this board has in front of us. I think we heard from two incredibly talented candidates. Both have experience in, you know, in, you know, in a variety of, a variety of roles. Both, I believe, can be successful in our, in our great town, our little quaint little seaside beach community of Swambskot, Massachusetts. I think, you know, we saw the level of preparation from both of these candidates. I think Mr. Connors was extremely well-prepared, both last week and, and this week. Definitely making, making the decision for us, the five of us up here, pretty difficult. He answered our questions. He, he really provided a lot of, a lot of thorough follow-up, and was anticipatory of the questions that we were, that we were going to ask him. So certainly, a lot of, a lot of preparation and, and really thought went into, went into his, his interviews, both of them. And I think, you know, to Danielle's point, I think he's hungry. I think he, he certainly wants to come in and, and do, and do a great job, and really embrace our community, and, and really take us to the next level if given that opportunity. And I feel, I feel confident that he, that he can, that he can do that. When I look at Jason, you know, he, he has proven that he can tackle the role. He's, he's worked in, he's worked in Marblehead. He's currently working in Dunstable. He has a variety of, of experience and, and expertise. He's certainly connected at the state level. But really, I, I think, I think, you know, to Mary Ellen's point earlier, you know, it comes down to that experience. And all else equal, you know, we have, you have someone who has, who has proven that they can run a municipality. And, you know, to me, I think that's incredibly important. I love the, I love the fact that Jason Silva has worn many hats. He's, he's worn hats. He's been the finance director. You know, he's been, he's been a chief of staff. I think both candidates really said, you know, we're, you know, we're, we're looking to, we're looking to the board for direction, for goals and objectives. And we really want to make sure that we're, you know, that we're going to, that we're going to follow the, the guidance of the board. So I think it's important for us to be able to provide that guidance, provide those guide, those guardrails, and to really ensure that we have, that we have success with whomever the, the next town administrator in Swambskot is. You know, at this, at this very moment, just giving the, given the experience of Mr. Silva, I would certainly lean to Mr. Silva.
You want me to go first?
I sure do. The privilege is the chair, and I very rarely get to utilize it. So, you're up, Doug.
Yeah, as I said, you know, they're, they're both great. And I, I really, the lead for me is that I'll be happy either way we go. I really, sincerely, that's, that's not a dodge. But I, I think, you know, obviously, they have slight, you know, differences or strengths and differences in that regard. But I, I just, I think we're going to be in good shape with both of them. I, beyond the experience with Jason, I have to say that I think I loved his kind of great place to work answer. Probably the cherry on top was the, I don't know how the staff will feel about watching Celtics videos, but I, I think actually that did encapsulate a lot for me about his level of commitment. I don't think he was just saying that he learned something from the past. I think that he, whether that was, you know, there was a deep, deep story there, or one or two people that were cranky, or had a bad experience. I think there was some deep learning that happened there. And that his, his answer to that, which, you know, it's, it's hard to get anything done if you're not able to work very well with the people you work with. And so I, I think his deep answer there, I have like 12 different things written down in that category from his answer. And I think Nick gave a great answer about that as well. But it, you know, he, Jason said tonight, he said previously that that was an area that was really important to him, and it showed. I mean, clearly, he's got the financial chops. He has the experience. So, you know, I kind of give him, you know, some edge in, in those categories as well. And then it wasn't just about the staff. I liked the, what he talked about in terms of really getting out in the community, and having, you know, he talked about the kitchen conversations, and the cafe talks, and that, that level of really engaging. I, you know, it was, it was interesting to hear that because I could easily read him as a person that would be more comfortable somewhat sitting in the office, and working with his prioritization lists, and actually running the financials, and kind of working a little bit behind the scenes. But then he gave, you know, very specific, not like, oh, I think it's a really good idea to be out in the community and, you know, engage people, but really talked about how he's, how he's done that. It, I do think that Nick's communication skills are excellent. I love some of the ideas he had about using AI and engaging the community. But, you know, you probably could, you know, steal those ideas, and other people could do them, too. But I think, you know, he's got more of that natural inclination to be the, the one out in, you know, communicating with staff, with the community. But he doesn't quite have the exact same experience. It may be just as good, DCR, DOE R. But I suppose, you know, a little bit where Mary Ellen and David are coming down, you know, that, you know, having done it a couple times in different environments, does count for something. I'm going back to Jason, obviously. You know, I think, again, they're, they're both very strong, but I suppose if push came to shove, I'd probably go with Jason. But I'd be, just want to say, I'd be really happy either way.
Well, push will come to shove, because you will have to vote eventually on a first, sort of a first candidate and a second candidate. But I guess, it's funny that you said fresh, Danielle, because that's what I wrote on the top of Nick's interview today. I wrote fresh. Just felt, and actually Doug made a comment as we were walking out in just the last interview, or the first round of interviews, that, like, Nick did his homework because he was talking right to you when he answered one of those questions. Like, he had a vulnerability, a humility about him. Like, you could tell he wanted it. He wanted to be here. He wanted this opportunity. He knew that it meant something. It meant, it means something to us. It means something to him. It just felt, again, echoing all the things we've all said, that there are a lot of benefits to both of them. Either of them could sit in this seat and do a great job. I feel like some of the issues that we're looking at, and some of the feedback that we got, well, all of the feedback that we got from the, the survey, you know, was about transparency, communication, and finances. So like, best case scenario, you would have one that had it all. I feel like we have one that is more stronger on the communications, perhaps transparency side of things, because they, in my opinion, have a more fresh outlook. And, you know, they're coming at it from different angles, and they're trying new things, and they've had this community engagement experience. And so, they're not, they don't have a fear of failing. They're, like, if, that's They're, like, that's the impression I got from Nick. But then the strength in the finances and having put together a budget, having worn many hats, like you all have said, that comes from Jason. So it's like, they truly are sort of neck and neck. And if you, if we value, if, if we value them all the same, I, I actually don't value them all the same. I'll just say that. I don't value them all the same. And the reason I don't is because I feel like one, one is more easily learned than the other. And we could get great staff or have mentors or understand, you know, ways to bring them up to speed on finances. I don't even really think that's that necessary for Nick. I think that his work in Lynnfield and his work at the state level actually is going to give him a perfectly well-equipped background for this. I think Jason tried to explain to us that he learned over time that some things are more important than others. And I think that was very vulnerable of him. And I appreciate him explaining that to us because we all did due diligence. We all knew that, you know, there was some question of the comings and goings in Marblehead and whatever happened, however that flushed out. And I feel like we got a very satisfactory answer. Like, it's very understandable between COVID and, you know, all the stress and the conditions of the finances in Marblehead and all of those things, that you would come to a conclusion of burnout and having to have a, a new start. I just think then, if, if the former can be learned and the latter can't, then maybe for me, I'm leaning a little bit more Nick. But again, I feel like both of them could perfectly do the job and meet the needs that we need. But just want to be honest in my opinion.
I do want to say too, what developed into a slight red flag for me was the jumping around from municipality to municipality for short stints. So whereas the situation that we're in with, with Jason, he recently signed a contract in Dunstable. But at the same token, he's applied for a couple of TA jobs last year, this job this year. So to me, I can't get it out of my head that why is this going to be his last long-term permanent stop? And how can I best judge that? Right? I can only judge it by past experience. And if I look at that, I look at a three-year stint in Marblehead, a two-year stint in Dunstable. That was an early renewal with a significant increase, only done three or four months ago. So how do I know that the same isn't going to happen to us here in Swambskot at the end of maybe year two, if we can't give him X? Or whatever the situation is, right? How do I know that that long-term, that we're his last long-term stop? Or potentially like at least a longer stint than two or three years? Right? I don't want to see us put a lot of time, effort, and money into somebody that may not be here for the long haul. Now granted, I, no one could potentially be here 20 years, right? But, you know, five, 10, sure, that's realistic, right? That's hopeful. You know, when I, when I spoke to the question about Marblehead and why he left, I mean, he was really honest and I appreciated it. He said he was cooked. Okay? So to me, if you're cooked after being a TA in a couple municipalities, what does that say to me about when you come here? Right? Because we are a high-pressure, pressure cooker environment. Let's not, let's not mistake it. Let's not like pretend like we aren't, right? We're the same as Marblehead, if not different, right? A little bit, a little bit more aggressive, let's say. So how is that going to translate for someone that was clearly taxed by having a similar situation in a town right next to us? So I worry about that. Right? That's a, that's a, for me, that's a, that's a concern. You know, and again, I'm focusing on that aspect maybe a little bit more than the experience piece because, you know, to Katie's point, yes, we could bring somebody in to mentor Nick if we had to. But he is, he's an assistant TA. I mean, it's not like we're talking about, you know, he's, you know, a clerk, right, in, in a, in a town hall. He's, he's the sec, he's the number two in a town that's almost double the size of us, right? He's been there a year and a half, so not long-term. But if you think in that year and a half, he hasn't figured out what it takes to be a TA, I mean, I, I think that would be short-sighted of us to, to say that. Yes, Jason has more experience. But Jason has experience, you know, in a city like Salem as a chief of staff, right? For a long time. Or Joan Lovely's office is a whole different animal than an appointed town administrator of 15,000 people, right? So to me, his relevant experience is Marblehead and Dunstable. That's where I really see it. Two situations where you got two years and you got three years that you left the neighboring town and, you know, because of a, a high-pressure situation. So I, you know, those, those things being, you know, when I weigh that out, my head is going to lean towards the one that's giving me negative, less negative to consider, in my view. You know, the last interview, the first round of interviews, I think the very first thing he said to us is, I'm not looking for a job. I'm not here looking for a job. I was, you know, asked or recruited to come here. Which I want someone to tell me that this is definitively where they want to be, right? That's how, that, that's, I mean, maybe it's old school. Maybe it's, you know, not how everybody thinks. But I expect when people come and interview that they're going to, they're, they're almost going to sell me on why they want to be here, right? So, well, I, I think he definitely, you know, had some great answers. And I, I, again, we wouldn't go wrong either way. Those were things that stood out for me. I can't quite get past those.
I guess probably the thing that I wish the most is that we would not have a three to two vote on this. So, but there, there's a couple of things I just want to say, Danielle, with, with regard to what you said. It may be that we have another pandemic and that Swambskot ends up in a total financial mess. But I think the confluence of those two things happening in the next three to five years, like what happened in Marblehead, is relatively low probability. And I do think, at least from the conversations I had, which are not as extensive, it sounds like, as you and Mary Ellen, you know, that people do acknowledge that that was a really, really uniquely challenging situation. You know, it's not like he's, you know, running away from Dunstable. You know, I think he, as far as I understand it, there was an outreach made to him and, and he's responded to it. You know, Nick's moved around. You know, people move around. I don't, I, I don't hold that against anybody. You know, we do have someone who, you could say, has, with Jason, you know, he's now got five and a half, six years, whatever total of town administrator experience and still is ready to sign up again. And we have Nick, who, you know, has been an assistant TA, you know, for, I don't want to misquote.
Since May of '24?
Year and a half.
A year, year and a half. And, you know, wants to take a shot at, you know, being a TA. Yeah, I think that's great. And I totally agree with you about like his hunger and freshness. You know, what both of you have said, there's no doubt about that, that there's, there's an energy level there that comes from someone who hasn't done the job and really wants the job, right? And I think, you know, in a parallel nonjudgmental way, it's like you, you see in Jason, like someone who's done the job for six years and knows what it's really about. And this isn't like just going out and, you know, trying something new. Like, I know what this is going to be like. I've done it for six years. I know all the meetings I'm going to have to have. I know all the things that are going to fly at me. I've done the negotiations. I've built all the budgets and I still want to do it. And so I don't, in, in some ways, I kind of feel like those are, they kind of neutralize. They're not necessarily, you know, pro or con either way. I mean, or you could see them both as a pro. So I, I just don't want to, I guess I want to offer up the, just a slightly different interpretation of, you know, their backgrounds and where that comes to. But I'm going to come back to my initial point. And it may be impossible. But I think it's kind of like, you know, a big growth opportunity for this board, for us to, you know, if, if there is some way, and, you know, maybe there isn't, but at least with our kind of, you know, initial cards that we're flipping over here. I, I don't know. I'd love for us to somehow think outside the box about a way that, you know, we can do this in a different way than, you know, a three to two vote. Maybe that's just, you know, being a Pollyanna. But that's, I'd love for us to, you know, talk that through.
Well, you said you'd be okay with either one, Doug, so you could certainly change that and make it, you know?
Read it to the other way.
Yeah.
I just, I do have a comment because, you know, often, you know, being in that role as a town administrator, I used to always make comments that this isn't brain surgery to our last town administrator. But I did always say how it was an incredible challenge of dealing with so much of the public. And when you're in that role, it's, it is really, really challenging. And I did follow the finances in Marblehead at that time. And that was grueling. And I was just reading about it in the paper and talking to friends of mine on the Marblehead Finance Committee. For them to have to come up with that money and scramble as quickly as they did and not make an issue and cause more harm to the schools was really significant. And, you know, Marblehead is different than Swambskot. They, you know, they're a little bit more set in their ways than I think we are. I think we're a little bit more progressive than, than they are at times. And I think that it, it was a challenge. And, you know, I commend somebody for saying, you know what? My health comes first and this is not a good idea for my, my health or my family. And I did look at all of these resumes and I was concerned about how often people move from position to position. But when I look here at, when I looked at Nicholas Connors, I mean, one and a half years, and then his job before that was one year. Job before that was three years. I mean, he's moving too. And, and that, that seems to be what happens, is people just move and move and move. And, and maybe he'll be here a long time or maybe not. But I think that, for me, listening to him say that, you know, I'm happy where I am, I'm doing well where I am, and I received a phone call to look at this. And I looked at it and he lives in Beverly. And I don't, I don't hold that, I don't hold that against him. I mean, I have had positions where I received a phone call and I ended up making a move and it worked out great for me. So things happen.
Process question, clarification?
What are you going to me? I think I, go ahead.
You are the chair. Now, so we clearly have two candidates. We all seems largely feel pretty good about both of them. And we do need to start negotiations with one. And so we are required to do an actual vote in public about our first choice?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yeah, so...
Just want to clarify that.
Listen, I don't, I, I think we're, we were all giving initial opinions and we all said the candidate we like. If the will of the board is Jason, then we can't convince the will of the board to be Nick. Like, I'm not going to stand on circumstance and vote to make it a three-two vote. Like, it's, if you all, again, I saw stuff in both of them I liked. I saw stuff in both of them that will work itself out. Just my gut was leaning towards one candidate. And so, you know, I think it, there is an importance to it, whether it's unanimous or just, you know, for one or whatever it is. But, you know, we wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't sort of try to convince you all that our position was right and you the same. So I don't fault anybody for doing that. But I don't think you really have to worry about that specifically, the three-two issue, unless we draw more people to our side. But yeah, we do have to, we are going to have to make a clear, public vote for who the first position candidate is. And obviously, we are very lucky to have a, a great second position candidate, whatever that works out to be. And then in executive session, we'll talk about salary ranges and people we're designating to negotiate contracts. And if we can't get within the range, then we can move on to the second candidate. It sounds like the majority of us would be happy either way. So I would just say, at this point, it is simply a top runner. And obviously, we lose a little bit of leverage to have to do that because, you know, in a sort of corporate setting, you would throw out job offers and see who took them and get more bang for your buck. We're not able to do that here in the confines of municipal hiring. So, so that's just the position we're in. We just have to grit our teeth and bear it. So, there's no more to offer?
So then I would make a motion to select Jason Silva as our first candidate and Nicholas Connors as our second candidate.
Second.
I'll do a roll call vote, just so we can be really clear for the minute. So, Mary Ellen? You, oh, you made the motion, so you're an I.
Yes.
Doug?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Danielle?
No.
Katie is an I. So with great regret, Katie is an I. So we will now then move to, well, we'll entertain a motion to close out the meeting and we'll move to executive session to talk about the contractual details. And then we will reach out to the candidates post that conversation. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone, for joining us.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Just going to sit down.